Is that line that says one times three. Again, slightly more staffing allocated to our focus and title one schools based on the need for more staffing to run a school schedule and so on and so forth. Two others that I wanted to highlight here. The focus AI is really the line that says two point seven. Nope, it's we're off here a little bit. Let me just see which one is focus AI. Focus AI is two point seven and five point eight. Those are additional teachers that our focus schools and our title one schools are allocated. Again, based on the farms rate, those teachers are used to reduce class size. They're they're used to provide intervention, small group instruction. At the end of the day, the bottom line, the total is you see the difference in staff. We have thirty nine point five five FTEs in our lower farm schools, fifty one point one in our focus, and fifty nine point zero zero seven five in our title one. A range of differentiated that amounts to almost four thousand dollars per pupil more going to our higher farm schools. And so when we talk about the critical strategy of ours for closing the achievement gap, this equitable funding and support is is number one. That's an absolute critical strategy of ours. And and I think this is a nice illustrative example of three similarly sized schools and how their resource and staff quite differently based on the needs of their schools. So the master plan that we submit to the state is built around five core strategies. Number one, implement a rigorous and culturally proficient curriculum instructional program. That's money that we take in from the state and we then put into developing the most rigorous curriculum, the best assessments, enhancing teaching and learning. I just talked about investing greater resources and support to schools with greater need. Managing human capital. Everything we do to improve our workforce, to diversify our workforce, is all done in service of improving student achievement and closing the achievement gap. That's a core strategy of ours. Promoting the active involvement of parents, partners, and community stakeholders through community engagement strategies, parent community coordinators, community engagement teams. All of that is in service of closing the achievement gap. By the way, all of which was not accounted for in the OLO report when they discuss what the forty seven million dollars does not go to. Focusing on operational excellence, accountability of results, our accountability framework, our testing protocols, which as anyone in the Ed reform movement knows, are is a huge driver towards student achievement. So all of this is is our strategies that we use in service of closing the achievement gap. I do want to say one last thing before I close out. There was a very, very important finding in that OLO report about teacher equity that more experienced teachers on on average are teaching in our lower poverty schools. That's a real issue. It's a real issue that we are attacking and have been tackling for a couple of years. Arnie Duncan, soon to be former secretary of Ed, back in the end of July two thousand fourteen issued a call to all state states of education officers to implement at the state level educator equity plans. And we here in M C P S have been tackling the issue of making sure that every child in our district has the most effective teacher in front of them. We have implemented a career lattice which seeks to get our best teachers in front of our children who need them the most, our most vulnerable youth. We have nationally board certified teachers here who are distributed equitably across our district. There are multiple measures of teacher effectiveness. Experience is certainly one proxy of that, but it's not the only one. And and I'm pleased to say that I think we're in the vanguard of the work around teacher equity here in the state, but it's an issue that we in other districts absolutely must grapple with and it's a core part of our human capital strategy. So I do want to acknowledge that as a finding in the OLO report that I think is really worthwhile for us to continue to tackle. But as far as the funding piece, that was really the issue that I just wanted to clarify this morning. So I thank you for your time. I think as the anchor Tricia of this, I think we're done. And so we'll open it up for discussion, Ms. O'Neal. I think the floor is yours.
Yes, and I know that many of you had questions that were triggered through our presentations. And I know you probably had more of a presentation this year in some years. We thought it was really important to get some information in relation to the forward of the legislative sessions, there were harms, the correct information. That was something missed without a very candid discussion. So without questions?
I know you're not active.
Oh, I have to go by some of the school instructions that we've got. Very heroic outside as you can see. I know like this is not my idea of something that I'm sharing with you. Somebody tried to tell me, first question, can you tell me how, what's the process for determining when schools are going to renovation? Second question is, I thought I heard somebody that that process will forever change. And one of the questions I got, I don't I don't know what to ask you. I'm probably going to bring out something that ever since I was twenty twenty three, since I was a lightyear in two thousand and two, that's all I heard. Who's going to be, is how far they take over. So I could want to know if you were playing. And then one other question. Three of us, probably those, got multiple recalls for the last three days. About solar panels on roof. And so the process right now is one, why are we solar panels? Why would we be here at the school? We have everything for my draft and part three, roll out, or on on period. Those are my questions. Why don't you ask them?
I think the questions that are in my realm, so I try to answer as soon as I can. Of course, the process for renovation, particularly related to the Paulsville. Paulsville High School was assessed as part of the maintenance, which raised back assessments. So that gives pace. The assessment that we did in two thousand and ten was only one time for, and it was north of it. So without needing to assess that, no more high schools added on after the original west side. So the process for the renovation or if you call it renovation expansion program is looking at the practically the age of the original building, as well as those two parameters of the fact, and one was educational grade levels. Is that is are the spaces within the school adequate to provide today's curriculum to students? The second component of the fact assessment was dealing with facility conditions. You know, what is the age of the roof to the mechanical, electrical plumbing? It just went after the whole school to formulate a point system that resulted in a priority order. So we assessed thirty four schools. So again, Paulsville was done in nineteen ninety three, so you can make in that queue in the line. Assessment that was done in nineteen ninety three was included in Paulsville. So Paulsville High School is moving to its place. Where it makes the most difference or equally making difference is the enrollment of the facility for middle or high schools. And the even with slight mathematical error, that's not going to change the whole queue. Number one. Number two, my expectation is rather than setting up the queue for next twenty years, we all know that facility condition changes day to day, year by year. Some building maintains it very well, some building deteriorates even further. So the idea that we're going to talk to the committee about is should we be assessing more often than every twenty or thirty years to generate this queue of schools? So maybe we should be assessing every five years instead of every twenty years or plus. So those are some of the ideas that the committee is talking about with the progressive recommendations coming forward. Again, the schools that was assessed back in nineteen ninety three, all retain this queue and were coming down to member it or unmembered schools. High schools got some ways to go.
High school order right now is Seneca Valley is next, we're doing weeping right now. Seneca Valley is next, they're moving, and then with this. And the high schools are the biggest ticket item, and that's always to be hundred million. Seneca Valley has been bombed a couple of times, delayed, and every time it gets to like it was delayed, it bombs everybody a few years later. But the order worship, which is sacrosanct, ETAs, counting why? Seneca Valley, Brooklyn, and Brooklyn.
Well, for what it's worth, I thought it was stressful at Seneca Valley in nineteen eighty. It was the third building, as they do already, since before Seneca Valley was built. So when we vote for this building, we have to impose our decision and the condition and the preference. We're not getting a lot of sympathy for point systems and queues.
Seneca, I mean, Paulsville did have a major addition. Two thousand and nine, they added a huge addition. It's not that it's been untouched since it opened. It did receive a major, I mean, you know, I remember touring with the ETAs that there were no eye wash stations and chemistry labs and et cetera. They added.
Yeah, there was at least sixteen, or less than more, in size lab. Right, so again, I think the assessment part is us more than the age of the building. It goes on to look at educational alignment. There's one aspect, and I think the other is facility condition, and both are back then. So it's not just looking at built to let us, and oh my God, we got losing at once behind others, but perfectly fine, but that can't be the only facility conditions to look at, which will be part of another. So there was a very detailed methodology that went into the assessment piece. Again, so the whole notion of should those assessment pieces be setting a priority for next twenty or thirty years is the question we're going to be looking at. Second is obviously that's small, not very good at, or that is not going to really change a lot of queues, but it's going to be mostly dependent on those schools again, which are probably going to be assessed more frequently and require more accurate assessments going forward. That's what we stand. Solar panels. Sustainability has been a longstanding movement at the board for a long time. And it goes back to many decades on this issue. We already have eight schools with solar panels on the rooftop. That's closely from there many years ago. In past months, we would approve additional eight schools to be on the rooftop. So we'll have over sixteen schools with solar panels on the rooftop. The the trends in solar panels, not just looking at the rooftop, but any other methodology. Right now, we're looking at idea, again, this is only an idea, of looking at placing solar panels on the ground. There's a technology that's evolving such a way that now solar panels are being installed instead of windows that we are also looking into. So there's brilliant technology that has been evolved that allows opportunity to do this. So we assess all the schools, and as you all know, we're growing as we presented today, and we need school grounds, we need school sites, so why are we doing this? We are only targeting certain schools in in geographical areas that we think we are okay with the next ten years. Just tenure period is not permanent. Ten years, whether we could better utilize those vacant sites. And these are vacant sites that we think it's safe to utilize for ground mounts. Now, those vacant sites, some of them used to have tenants for different purposes. Some of them just sitting empty, okay? The idea of ground mounts is is two things. One is not only the sustainability, but the other aspect is red, because they have potential revenue generating source. So between all three sites, we're looking at possibly somewhere between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars a year in cost avoidance and energy utilities. And if you mount that to a ten year period, we can do the math quickly. We can mount anywhere from two to three million dollars to eight to eight dollars. So rather than having these vacant sites sit empty that we have to maintain, and those deals have to get loaned and extra defenses and all those things are true ones, rather than being on year wise, we are looking at idea of use our fairway to utilize the vacant sites. These are just merely eight loopholes, no decisions as to make. So we're seeking community inputs on those three sites, including Brickyard. So the idea is we have one with at Brickyard, we have one at Cachal Road. That one is a work field work. So we're looking at three sites. And in order to generate enough electricity that would be a worthwhile investment for the vendor, you know, we got to have approximately about ten acres that are cleared and also be away from the obstruction of the shade. So if there's a lot of trees, for example, it might not be a good site even if it is an acre site. If there is a large building structure that surrounds the site that is going to cast a lot of shadows, that's not a good site. So we have to look at a lot of criterias on the board of educational sites that needs not only the site size average, but the surrounding conditions without investing any capital dollars into it that could generate potential revenues to further avoid the possibility. Three hundred thousand we add equal all the site on. Brickyard's say low on the debt, ballpark on the debt. Brickyard is approximately twenty acre site. It is largely open. But because it is surrounded by large trees, we can't have this solar panel up to the property line edge. So we have to stay away, somewhere between twenty to twenty two, that range, away from the edges to to be clear setting. My estimate, I believe, was somewhere around one third of the amount of the wood that was one yard of that two or three hundred thousand dollars. This idea of ground mount is is catching up fast. There's a project going on, these are short, that is really a huge ground mount project. This is already being gone on in in Europe. You all know those, you know, what used to be a farm, they're not a farm. Big farmers can make more money leasing out those and installing the solar farm and that's more revenue generating source. So this trend has been going on for approximately somewhere between five and a year period. It's catching up real quick. Again, the the solar photovoltaic system is just the one idea within our systems in our sustainability management plan, what we have a long outlook of popular third area. And the goals that we're trying to achieve, this is a small component of it. And and again, this is only an explore for its age, whatever end, and we're going to listen to the communities to see what concerns that they have, and we'll be going with.
And it was two hundred, three hundred?
Thousand dollars a year.
Thousand dollars.
In cost avoidance of people across. And again, this is really an idea of ten year period so that we're not committing this for twenty or thirty years, not knowing whether we need to reclaim those sites back, right, for the school purposes. But we can, we also are going to try and put it in there if we need it for a school site before ten year period, that'd be right with this.
So how much was the acreage of Cachal?
Just slightly less than twenty acres, but there was a little more open. I don't have the exact paper, I don't think, but I think it was less than a hundred percent. Even though it's not in our district, also made the conversation, it's had solar panels on the Brickhead site. So what I'm seeing, the private sector, here, after the building, probably the highest performance market for Madison, Route forty nine, they have a very large offensive on the side. What they found is they put solar panels over the parking lot. As we made a change for the cars at Parkers, we had a day, also some of the, so the panels. Well, I'm tearing that off and get some other options. Right, yes, we did. And and the the solar panels are so much more important than what you could go. And the parking lot was actually one of the issues that we did explore as part of the team branch project, and we're doing it. However, the issues with parking lot is a couple of things. One is the initial capital investment that is going to go into to do it. Meaning that if it has to be retroprinted into current parking lot spaces, some of those wires that has to keep action to the grid would have to share fires existing asphalt and go back into the building to be able to fit into either a transformer that gets back into the grid back out of the street. Second issue, so there's that initial capital investment that is going to offset the potential revenue that could come in. The second issue with with parking lot and school grounds is it has to do with a little bit of maintenance and security because it it needs to be elevated minimum fourteen feet for buses to be a clear or fire trucks to be able to clear on the need for its canopy. There are certain elements to that, but we're also worried about the vandalism or any other things that could potentially happen in the quiet spaces versus and these vacant sites. So the cost effectiveness is is one factor and the other one, the operation. We did consider about five percent of one of the main problems.
Along the line, most of the growth that we know is very much in the light of the young. Since I was on the way, I remember how absolutely impossible it was to find a site. However, it now really, really is much less than I see. What is the plan for actively seeking additional sites? What is the plan for down there? I wish we had a break there.
Maybe I can touch up and then I'll hand it over to Bruce to address some of those issues. And.
How about facilities?
Yeah, I understand. So the growth is is while it seems to be concentrated in the county, it's actually happening in the county. It's more concentrated in the pocket.
It's on passively, not just red, it's passively of the sports.
Right. So we do have challenges with finding sites. Some areas we also never look. The other issue that we have, nobody's ever heard of it, but that we need to think about is we do have board of education sites on sites throughout the county that are, it may not be right next to the school that we want or need, but we look at it from a cluster by cluster to see where not only board of education on site, but publicly owned site that could be potentially close sites that we have possibly surplus to the county that we can reclaim it back. Or even private open site, whether it's a parks or or commercial sites that we are looking at. That is a discussion we're continuing to have with with some of the council members. But our first strategy before we consider a new school is to look at existing school sites to see whether we can expand on existing school sites. Because many of these school sites that were set back in early fifties and sixties and seventies, and what they did right was setting the site sizes somewhere around like eight, nine acres for the elementary school sites that we could possibly add on to, to bring up to that, you know, the core of somewhere around seven hundred forty students at elementary, about twelve hundred in middle school, and of course, that twenty four hundred in high schools, that ideal markets that we were trying to pick. So before we consider a new school, we want to first technically look at the existing sites and capacities and see whether it's feasible to add on to this around the site. Matter of fact, superintendent recommendations that provided one of the supplement in downtowning is looking at elementary school sites where we just cannot put an addition on. But we are looking at surrounding adjacent schools to see whether we can put additions there in order to provide relief to 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 the schools that we we have.
Do you have a list to identify or show high priorities or?
Yes.
Another question.
First of, thanks for saying this, that's enough. So often enough that, you know, thank you guys for this. Throughout the session, we're going to have a big process of all the sources. My only additional comment is for the session conversation. I understand that my only additional comment is, I think that we should, uh, have a conversation with the board. I understand that it's considered in the sense of additional classrooms based on focus schools. But given that we've got this growing population of kids, and given that stability in the school environment, so we hope that as things go forward and decisions are made about how, uh, this, decisions are made about how decisions are being made.
I've been spending a lot of time the last twenty months in all the schools in my district and working my way through them, and I've learned a lot. And like Eric, I just want to commend all of you, and we have amazing faculty and administrators and staff. One of the things, there are two things I want to bring up. One is the need for multilingual front office staff. And some schools, present, and some it's not. And so parental involvement is a challenge because there's just, there's no way to communicate. So I've been in schools where they told someone from the building teaming group to come and help translate for Karen, and that's just inappropriate and disrespectful and not having the same level of confidentiality. And so I just wondered if you could speak to recruitment and whether there's some effort to maybe transfer people to so every school with reasonable multilingual population has at least one person who can communicate at some level without needing to go to a language bank. The second question I have is I I taught in several classes last week in Dadeford of interrupted learners, which I've not experienced before. For those who may not have them in their district, these are students who might have gone as far as maybe second grade or something, or third grade in their home country, or taken out to work in the fields or something. And now they're here and they're in like eleventh grade. And they are functioning at a kindergarten, first grade, second grade level, except they're they're grown up kids and they're looking at graduation levels and stuff. And they are functioning at a really low level in those schools. So I wonder if you could speak to those two issues.
So I'll have Andy speak about that. Sam and Maria, I'll connect the children with interruptive.
So just briefly, a part of the teacher workforce diversity initiative, it's not just focused on teachers. We're really talking about diversity in broad ways, including linguistic diversity. So it's hugely important. And there's not a single principal at school that I know of where there isn't a large Spanish speaking population of students, and doesn't want more linguistic diversity. So we're working with our schools, our HR department on the recruitment front, on the staffing front. Many, many times as vacancies arise, the school will recruit specifically for a bilingual or multilingual front office person. And so it's just, it's a work in progress in terms of doing it. It's absolutely a priority of ours, it's absolutely a priority of our schools. And the good news is that there is flexibility in the ability to do that in terms of recruitment selection around linguistic diversity, and we need to do more recruitment for it. And that's a part of our strategy in our longer term capital strategy. That's going to take a little bit of time, but it's something we're absolutely prioritizing.
And she just hired me and people who's first has had, and she's very committed to this as well. And I think it will start to seize and grow.
And we've been talking about incentives for existing staff, is it more multilingual?
Yeah, so we we're in the initial stages of sort of a longer term approach to how do we address the essentially that equity issue and what what are the right structures, incentive structures in that? So we've had some of those conversations, but they're not fully fleshed out.
Yep. So the so the reality is that we have many schools who have had interrupted education for two or more years, starting at the elementary schools in our schools. So the school system has a protocol called N E X, which supports more intensive language development, ESO support, and some basic sort of skills at elementary level for students who've had interrupted education for two or more years and are also language learners. This problem becomes compounded as students become older and enter our programs in our middle and our high schools. And one of the things that we are bringing to the board in the spring, and currently we're working through this, is we've been working with the Department of Education and the Department of Labor. Because in Maryland, the Department of Labor is the one that grants GEDs for students. And so when you talk about a kid who is coming in, who has not been in school six or seven years, is in high school, has no credits, and is eighteen years old age. The question is, we're talking about a young adult who's living in the county. question is, we're talking about a young adult who's living in the county, and who, we need to be thinking about something different than the traditional schooling form, and I'm happy to say that we are building some momentum, I'm not ready to kind of put a picture on it, but fully yet, but this spring, we're going to be talking to the board, because we've been working with the Labor Department and the Department of Education about, and partnering with higher education and community programs, and provide a GED option for students. And so, what we're looking at is educating young adults from early ages of eighteen, sequentially up until maybe twenty-four, with the idea of a couple of factors. Ensuring that we are, that we go deep and on language development, lots of supportive ESO instruction, ensuring that we are able to expand on a current program called the CEPA program that's been in place, and ensure that students are able to get a certification for a job or a skill or a trade. And then the other thing is, working with MSE to find alternatives, so that they can actually follow a sequence that leads into a GED. Because what ends up happening is these young people come in and say, I only want to learn a trade, and I don't even want to go to school, and so they become sort of our dropout formation, students, and one of the things that we don't want to do is, we don't want to then have, on the other end, now you're over twenty-one, you're out there, you may have a very low-paying job, but you never even got a high school diploma. And so, another part of the county is dealing with a large number of young adults that have aged out of the school system, who are now saying, wait a second, I can't even sustain any kind of livable wage, some of them begin to have families, and I can't sustain those because now I'm twenty-three, or twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty, and I don't, and I can't, I don't even have a high school diploma. So, we are beginning to enforce a way in which we can think about that, not just MCPS, but with other education agencies to think about those young adults. And so, more information to come on that, it is, it is a huge, huge, huge moment, but I think we have the largest concentration by far out of the state, and so I think even the state folks were very eager to allow us to work through that in ways in which we can really think about how that's going to affect all of the areas. Yes, and I, we, I can get you exactly, I can get you all, Trish, the current METS programs, off the top of my head, a little there in my mouth, how many total METS programs were resurfaced, six hundred and forty-eight, if I remember, students right now, at the secondary, like, at the K to twelve level, so we're talking about the majority of them actually concentrated in our middle schools or high schools.
I'm wondering, and it's about specifically about this program, and it's something that really great idea, and which is the plan, are we partnering with the business roundtable or local businesses to get, to tie this program to paid internships, and, you know, the opportunity to make a little money while they are going to school?
Yeah, so actually, I invite everybody to our next board meeting, or to listen in, because we will be presenting to the board actually a larger strategy, which will open opportunities for this group of students that we're talking about, but actually for the entire system, we will be presenting to the Board of Education next Tuesday about our career plan in general. That has a huge component on working with the new established workforce group at the county level, but also maybe bringing in and extending even more our internships and our current partnerships with the business, the business folks for our students, and maximizing our currently invested resources around our careers and technical education programs.
So, I know, I want to be respectful of everyone, so if you have questions, you know, some of you have places to go, if you want to continue with questions, we're fine, if you want to just, maybe you want to ask, you can, Sam, David, and see.
I have a question, I just, it would be remiss if I left without, knowing, maybe to, or tell you a few comments about equity in the process, and I was reading the OLO report, it came out, I think, a hundred or two weeks ago, and imagining that there might be changes underway, and if there aren't, I hope we would strongly consider, I mean, wasn't lost on me, because the Western Conference of Citizens Vice reported a letter almost immediately after, you know, the OLO report came out, sort of stated there, or, in terms of monetization, the monetization, I just want to say, if you're not seeing the same push, you know, from the silver screen to the question, or anything like that, I don't think that gives me indication that people don't care. They do, I think it's constantly talked about, so, that's another, it's a very, very common thing. So, yeah, the issue I wanted to point out was, the issue of Beltline, it's something that I, so, that would have to write this, but the appearance of a middle school too, I think the Beltline is, it's a huge difference. So, as a parent of a elementary school kids, and you have peers who have elementary school, not so much, you have elementary school starting at twenty-five, and what I'm very frustrated with, and so I stand in the news media, is that's really very hard working with parents, so you have a lot of families who've never, like, you've never had to shut out for four years, I think they paid for, for years, and, and issues like that, so, I guess I just wanted to pass that along, and encourage you all to, to draw and create, and find ways, get more kids, and not dependent on our system, and more schools can be put into, elementary schools can be put at tier one, not the end, start planning, which works a lot better forward.
I think with that, if there's no more comments, questions, we'll all be here, and feel free to ask individual executive staff, you know, a lot of quite new members or staff, please pick up the phone during the session, I know Tricia's looking down there, feel free to text her, solve her, you know, board members are always available to come testify on bills, please take our legislative platform, study it, know that, you know, an essential element is that of local control, whether it's the curriculum, policies, calendar, et cetera, local control is a mantra of me and of this board, and we look forward to helping you in Annapolis, and thank you for all you do on our behalf, and we look forward to being here.